Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yeah.
Trustee Marasek?
Here.
Trustee Bond?
Here.
Okay, and I'd like to ask for an appointment for President Protam tonight.
Stand by.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I'll take the roll call. Trustee Spurling? No. Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Hines?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
No.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
And Trustee Bond, you get a vote?
Yes.
And that's Ty.
Mr. Ty.
All right. Hales then?
Attorney Wilson.
Yeah, it doesn't pass.
Okay.
Let's start over.
I'll make a motion. Trustee Lee?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yes, just so we can get this thing going.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
No.
Okay, that passes.
At this time... At this time, we have public participation. If you keep the comments to two minutes. See anybody in the public want to speak? Mike?
Good evening. My name's Floyd Pitterd, and I'm here in opposition to storing the mulch at the tree site over there that is the Blacktop Place. Does any of you know that have driven down Rathbone down there that that mulch site down there is a smeller? I also think it's a fire generator to a certain extent. I don't know if you've talked to the fire department at all about this, but that's about all I really have, is that I believe that thing's going to cause a serious odor. And the subdivision that I live in is only 200 feet or less from their front fence. I don't know how the letters were figured out as to who got letters. I got one because I own a building down there. It had nothing to do with my house. And most of the wind comes out of the west and will blow it directly across that subdivision. And I'm not opposed to the business being there, I'm just opposed to the storing of the mulch. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we get a comment to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I gotta agree with Mr. Pitterd. That's no place for a mulch with all the residential there.
I agree also. Is that even a permitted activity on that property?
I believe it is, but...
It is a special use. It requires a special use, and that is what will be coming before you tonight in the planning commission recommendations.
Are they currently storing mulch on the property now?
They are currently storing mulch on the property as well as logs.
So are they using their special use without it being granted?
That is correct. When village staff recognized that this did not comply with the ordinance, we did approach the owner as well as the tenant and stated that, you know, what village staff normally does is we work towards voluntary compliance. So we have not find or taken any other code enforcement action as long as they've been working through this process with us, and they have been.
Have they continued to store more mulch on that site since they've been notified?
They have continued to use it. Once again, we did not require that they stop using it until after this process is complete.
We can wait till the rest of trustees can speak when we get down to the planning commission, if the owner would like to speak now.
Hello, my name is John. I'm the owner of JPC Tree Care. Since this moment, we're not having any mulch. We have wood chips. It's a kind of little different issue. And we're not planning to do any more mulch in the property. There's a... Today I decide, and I told you, Eric, if this is going to be a problem, which I didn't know, I'm deciding not to use... To make any mulch on the property, which I do, the main thing, I would like to use the property to store my wood chips. And every week, we have a semi holding out to different facilities. So we need a place to store our wood chips, yes. To our trucks come every day, dump every week, the wood chips are going to be gone. The pile, it will not be big. It's just going to be a really small pile because we're going to be hauling every Friday trucks out of there. So at this point, I'm not doing any mulch on the property.
Were you storing any mulch on the property?
We're not storing mulch with wood chips. It's what we grind chips. We put in the property, which every city and every parkway, park district have a pile of wood chips. It's the same thing as going to have. It's a pile of wood chips. It will be no mulch. It will not make any odors. There will not be a pile where they're going to run afire because wood chip is not turned on fire. And there will be something management. What they mean is it's going to be only... I would say we make a truck per day, so five, six, seven trucks a week, which every week is going to be moved to the property on Rathbone. So all of our products is going to go to there. I know you was concerned about the Amaru ashbore. It's going to go to there. So anything concerned about wood, it's going to go there. I just need my property to do trees and store the wood chips temporary, and I would like to do firewood, which is we only do maples, oak. We don't do ash firewood. I just want to be clear on that. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
My name is Colleen Long. I'm here on behalf of Aurora Blacktop, the owners of the property, for over 40 years. We've been in Montgomery for over 40 years, and we take all this very serious. We were never trying to step on any toes. Unfortunately, we went out of business and decided to lease the property out. We were very careful in selecting our tenant. We were approached by a lot of different uses that we really didn't think you would like, such as recycling facilities, a junkyard. They wouldn't just damage our property, but there's just no place for it on Sard Avenue. I want you to know that we were very careful with choosing JPC. They keep a clean shop. They're a pleasure to work with. We've had tenants in the past. We have no problems with them. I feel bad that the original violation wasn't brought to the owners. It was brought to JPC Tree Care, our tenant, and I had no idea this was even happening for almost two months. So we're a little behind here, and we're trying to catch up, but at the same time, we've been working diligently with Jared to address every single concern he has. We've gotten quotes for the fence. We've done it all. We've moved the piles. We're just here to work with you.
I think we all understand that. We're all very... We've known the life fights, at least I have, for years. In retrospect, though, I didn't know you moved to Yorkville, so I don't think Jared would have known you moved to Yorkville. I don't know if there's any notification that you moved your office, but life fights have been good for Montgomery and Aurora Blacktop has too. Next, any more public comments? Okay, we'll go on to the next part. Revisions of the fire code? Jared?
Actually, we have building inspection supervisor group bar.
Yes, this is a revision that has been brought. I've been working with the Montgomery Countryside Fire Department on this. We are located within the Montgomery Fire Department District here. As many of you all know, we have five fire districts here. This is a revision of the original ordinance that's been in place for a long period of time. Basically, Montgomery Countryside about six months ago went from the 2006 fire code to the 2012 international fire code. So there are some minor revisions and some tweaks that I worked with the village attorney as well as Tom Myers from the fire department. I believe you all have a copy of it. There is a final version. There were a few typos. Jared and myself actually have been working on that. That final copy will be in your packets for next week's meeting. Basically, there are no major changes. There are some clarifications on there about use groups and things like that. Kind of breaks it out, kind of more coincides with the building code end of it, which, you know, overlaps with the fire department quite a bit. So I guess I'll open it up if anybody had any other questions regarding this.
Trustees, questions? I have one quick one. Is this... The building exceeds 5,000, and it seems like occupancy of 100 seems to be everything and all the quotes.
Yes.
What was the past?
The past? You know, I have that in front of me. Yeah, I believe it was the same. Let me just double check. I believe it was the same, however, some of the... Some of the... Some of the use groups had changed.
If you could check on that for...
Yeah, I could check on that for you.
Next meeting, because some of it, like Group A4, just has 5,000 square feet.
Right, correct.
Must be different a little bit, whether it's the word exceeds or whatever.
Okay.
If you could bring that back to us before we vote on it.
Okay, I can check on that item.
Any other questions? That'll be on the agenda the 28th. Tree survey, Michael?
Jeff, would you mind advancing it for me? Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight, and Ed Paff for Village Arborist has joined us. We're here to talk about a tree survey in general, but we have a few other points regarding the urban forestry program that we would like to discuss tonight. Some of these slides may look familiar. Ed and I were before you a few months ago with an update or with the status of the program, and we're here tonight to give you a little bit of an update on some particular topics. So, starting out, Jeff, if you would, urban forest condition update. Since we last talked to you in March, village staff has removed an additional 130 trees. We bring that up not because of the number itself, but to really demonstrate that we're rapidly... The number of dead trees that need to be removed is growing rapidly. I guess dead trees don't grow, they die, but you get the point. So from 2011 to the present, we've removed about 570 parkway trees. In that same period through last year, we were able to replace 202 of them. Our planting goal for this year with the current budget is 120 new trees, which leaves a deficit of 250 trees. So at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have approximately 250 locations where we will have had to remove trees but will not have been able to replant. That number will likely grow as Ed continues to survey the community. Again, the list of dead trees that need to be removed is getting bigger and bigger. So, next slide, please. So going into this fiscal year, again, as everyone knows, we have limited resources, and we're willing to work with that, but we're past the days of being able to replace every tree that we cut down. So we've had to develop some... We're calling them guidelines for now. I wouldn't say these are hard and fast rules, but again, there are lots of situations where trees are being removed that we're not going to be able to replant. So what we're proposing, and for your consideration, are these guidelines. We will avoid infrastructure conflicts. We've cut down some trees that have been... They're dead, but they were blocking signs or they were growing into streetlights. They were just planted in a poor place. So we will not be replacing those generally. We're going to try to minimize long gaps in the canopy. This is most prevalent out in the newer subdivisions where the trees aren't as large and where we're... We've got clusters of ash trees in particular that are coming down, so we may have long stretches of a block or two where we're removing quite a few of the trees. We'll give a higher priority to areas with large aesthetic impact that kind of ties in with the last. We'll give priority to lots that have had multiple trees removed. That happens on some corner lots where there'll be trees on each frontage, on each street. Or we just have had, again, out west with the ashbore problem, we've had properties where both parkway trees have been removed from the same property. The idea of first out, first in will come into play. That's lower down on our list, but we do have some locations where we have not replanted trees that were taken down from last year. So we will try to get those replaced. Again, if they meet enough of the other guidelines, again, I hesitate to call them criteria. Whatever trees we plant will work to improve tree diversity. One of the problems we're having is if you look at the village overall, we probably have moderate tree diversity, at least in the new areas. I kind of looked at Ed for getting a little bit. But as you look at blocks or developments, we're finding that we have some areas of poor diversity where we have a lot of the same tree on two, three blocks in a row. We have one neighborhood out west where I think we have 100-plus trees. So it's probable that within a year or two, we're going to have to... Those two blocks will pretty much be clear cut because they're all ash trees. So... And we'll allow residents to contribute. I put the 50/50 ratio in parentheses there. We've thrown that number around a lot, and I've been unable to find an official 50/50 tree replacement policy, but the practice that we've been using for the last few years is that if we are unable to plant a tree for someone, if they are willing to pay for the tree, our staff will plant the tree. So there's no additional cost outside of our own labor and equipment costs, which are built into, again, our equipment costs and salaries and that. And it works out pretty much to about half the cost. We use around $300 to purchase and pay someone to plant a tree. Pretty much $150 each way. Varies with the type of tree you get, but... And Ed and I will be coming back to you later in the year with further discussions on the urban forestry program and where we're at and some issues we'll need to talk about. And perhaps at that time, we'll be able to, if we want to develop and adopt a formal policy on public participation in paying for these, we can do so at that time. Another area, and this is basically what your agenda topic is, is tree survey. Last year, Ed and I had put in for two Emerald Ashbore grants. One was for reforestation, basically getting money to pay for planting new trees, and one was called a technical assistance grant, which you could use to hire a consultant to perform a tree survey for you. Again, a tree survey is just that. We go out, we document, record the location, species, size, health, all kinds of conditions. You can add as much information as you like, and you document where and what all your trees are. So we've tried to add a few bullet points. Tree surveys are important management tool for communities. They track work being done on individual trees. They provide the foundation for long and short-term maintenance and management goals, and some of the things that we can use the data for to establish cyclic pruning program, species diversity, risk management, long-term evaluation. And again, it gives us one document, one place where we've got all this data recorded. It ties into GIS system. Again, it's a very powerful tool for staff, especially a small staff like ours, which is basically Ed probably doing 80% to 90% of the field work on this, and I work on the administrative end, budgeting and contracting and things like that. And that's really our tree staff here. Again, developing the survey allows us to have one database for all near and long-term management actions used to develop possible changes in the program and budget impacts, ties into GIS. Public Works has not gotten into the GIS programs much at all. This would be a good first step for us to do that. And we're currently using estimates of many things. We have estimates of tree population, but we don't know exactly how many trees in total or of different species or varieties that we have. Estimates of size, diversity, health, all kinds of things. We've started to make some internal Excel spreadsheets to track some of this, but again, with limited staff, it's challenging to do from year to year. I apologize for this table. When I transferred it over, it...
Like while you're handling them out, that 50/50 program is in the parkway, not in the person's backyard, I presume?
That's correct. Yeah, everything we're talking about tonight is publicly owned trees and the right-of-way generally. We don't have any programs for private tree replacement at this point, so...
And does the resident purchase the tree and you just plant it? Or do they purchase the tree through the village?
They reimburse the village. They pay for it, and then we work with our nurseries, and it just works out better. It gets delivered to our building. Our crew can take it out there and plant it. So... On the screen tonight, and again, for the audience, for those of you with good vision, you'll enjoy this. For those of you like me and glasses, it's a little bit small, so... But we wanted to talk a little bit... Again, Ed and I have gone through our current budget and just wanted to run this proposal by all of you for concurrence, hopefully, in how we spend our money this year. The left-hand column are the major work tasks that we use: large tree pruning, large tree removal, tree replacement, stump removal, and tree survey. The middle column is a proposed budget. In total, we had hoped to get $115,000 for our tree program this year. $95,000 of that was requested through our general fund. That's our typical, you know, budgeted funds here in the village. And we'd also hope to get the $20,000 EAB grant. That was broken down, as you can see, $24,000 to large tree pruning, $30,000 to removal, $31,000 to tree replacements, $10,000 to stump removal, and $20,000 for the tree survey. The next column over, we did not... weren't able to get $115,000. Our current budget for FY14 is $80,000. That's all general funds. There's no grant money in there. So Ed and I sat down and tried to figure out where we could cut back on our original requests. So what we would like to do is spend $8,000 on large tree pruning. That's about a third of the original amount. It is a third of the original amount, and we feel that dollar amount is what will be required to hire contractors to come in and remove the largest of those trees. We just... Some of them get too big. We don't have equipment for. As the board will remember, we've approved the purchase of a bucket truck, and we're getting close to getting that. We think we can manage most of the rest of that with our own staff, and again, using the bucket truck and the chipper that we're also working on purchasing. Large tree removal, we still think we need $24,000 of the original 30. Originally, we wanted to remove known hazard trees and some advanced decay trees. We're really going to focus only on removing hazard trees, and Ed could give a much more detailed description, but generally, those are trees that, you know, have a very... Have likelihood of being a hazard to residents, pedestrians, motorists, just because of their condition and the likelihood that parts of them will start to fall. Tree replacement, we've cut that back to $26,000. We were able to use $4,000 at the end of FY13 that we still had in last year's budget for tree purchasing to buy those trees. So we have about 40 trees that are going to be delivered that came out of last year's tree budget. So we were able to cut that back down to $26,000 and still reach our 120 new tree target for this year. We're removing all money for stump removal. We've rolled that cost into the removal or the replacement cost. So instead of asking a contractor just to give us a planting price, we're now saying give us a price to plant and remove the old stump. So the effect is it reduces the total number of locations that we can work at because the costs individually are going to be higher. And then we feel... We did get a quote for the tree survey. It's $22,000, slightly under 22, but we've rounded it up. We feel that the tree survey is a very critical element to moving forward with our program, whether the staff stays the same size or gets larger. The tree situation in Montgomery is not going to get better for a little while as far as dead and dying trees. We have the Emerald Ashbore that's going to continue to cause a lot of problems and require a lot of removals. We've also had a lot of die-off from stress and drought over the last few years, and again, Ed is much more averse on the detailed reasons as to why. But again, that list of dead trees that have to be removed, we don't feel it's an option to leave dead trees standing for very long because then they become hazardous trees very quickly. So moving forward, if we determine that a tree is dead or near dead, we'll remove it. So tonight, our goal was to share all this with you, answer any questions, and hopefully gain concurrence on how we are proposing to allocate the funds this year, including hiring a consultant to do the tree survey for us. If you are in concurrence with that at next week's board meeting, I will bring that proposal forward to you for review and approval, hopefully. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When do you typically purchase your trees?
Ed, would you like to address that?
Are you doing the spring planting and the fall planting? Wherever you purchase your trees from, are we looking at potentially park-grade trees as well? Are they a little less expensive?
What type of trees?
Like a park-grade tree?
I'm not familiar with the term park-grade.
Well, most of the trees that we're getting would be more considered park-grade tree. I've been going with local nurseries, and I've been going down to a two-inch diameter tree because they tend to survive better in the parkway situations. I send like a list of what trees, what varieties I'm looking for to several of the nurseries in the area, and then I ask them to price each one and how much would be to be delivered over here. And then sometimes the trees will come from more than one nursery, depending on one species is better priced somewhere else, as long as the overall package works.
Are you finding the cost of the two-inch trees is starting to go up now?
The cost of two-inch trees is starting to go up now, yeah. And availability of some of the other species that we're trying to get for more diversity is becoming less, so there's more pressure on that, too.
I'll see with some of my connections that I have if I can try and get you guys some... Or let you in on some relatively inexpensive park-grade trees and stuff. I'll see what I can do.
Any other questions? Any other trustees?
I had a question. The reduction in removing dead and dying limbs was kind of dramatic. Could you share... Are you comfortable with the new number, or was that a difficult?
I wouldn't say we're absolutely comfortable with it. We can work with it. We think the 8,000, again, is the minimum of what we need to bring in somebody with the proper equipment and skill to take down or to work in the largest of those trees. The balance of those, we'll try to do with our own staff. Again, now, having the bucket truck this year will make us much more capable of doing that. Ed is well-trained. Corey Kennedy's been working with Ed quite a bit, so they're a pretty good team. Some of the other guys help. So we think we can manage with it. Again, we may get to a situation where we decide that there are some hazardous conditions that just have to be dealt with. It's really not an option. Once we become aware that the condition is out there, we need to rectify it.
I've gotten a lot of... A relatively lot of amount of comment from people wanting to know if we're going to replace the dead and cut trees. And for several, I've mentioned the possibility of some kind of cost-sharing arrangement. And so far, everyone's been receptive to talking about that, so I think it's something we should pursue.
Several ways you can go on that. I mean, traditionally, we have paid the full cost of replacing parkway trees, but you could adopt other, you know, mandatory cost-sharing where if you want the tree, you have to pay part of it. We have to be willing to live with... There may be people who decide they don't care to have the tree. So we'll balance our desire to have a consistent canopy in forest as, you know, opposed to how we're going to pay for all this.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mike.
If I could, trustee, can I get a consensus on the allocation there? If all of you are fine with it, we'll just move on, but I don't know if you want to...
You're going to bring more information, like you said.
Well, Ed and I need to move forward on purchasing and starting this work, so what I was hoping to get tonight, again, was just some concurrence that the way we've decided to break down the available funding is acceptable to the board.
Any questions on the funding? Any objective? Any of the points?
A question about the tree survey.
Yes, sir.
You increased it by $2,000.
$20,000 was the budget number based on what the grant would pay us. 22 is based off the actual quote. It's like 21,200. We do it not to exceed 22,000. We do it not to exceed 22,000, just to cover if there were more trees out there than we've anticipated, et cetera. But that's where the difference is.
I think we should move forward, is kind of the way I'm leaning.
Anybody have any other objections to it? You should have your answer, then.
Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission recommendation, Jared, and if you would take Ryland first, please.
Oh, absolutely. I'll switch them then to the real short one. So in summary, Ryland Homes has approached the board as well as staff to build some new homes in two subdivisions, Saratoga Springs and Orchard Prairie North, and in conjunction, excuse me, sorry, in conjunction with that, they have asked for a residential marketing, some additional residential marketing signs. Now, we do have an ordinance that allows onsite and off-site residential marketing signs. However, in two cases, they are looking for signs that are larger than what we currently allow. So for instance, when it comes to the onsite marketing signs, we currently allow up to 64 square feet for onsite marketing. They are requesting 120 square feet. In regards to off-site residential marketing signs, we currently allow 32 square feet. They are requesting 120 square feet. Staff did a survey of some surrounding communities and came to the conclusion that onsite signs, we are actually, we're either on par or really low, depending on the community. So some communities allow just 32, so we're, excuse me, we're currently somewhat in the middle of the road. Some communities allow as low as 32 square feet. However, others allow, basically, they do not, they do not have a maximum square feet, but they incorporate a setback. So the height of the sign cannot be more, or you have to have a setback from the right-of-way equal to the height of the sign. And so when I spoke with the planner from that community, they said that typically that is enough to keep the size of the sign, you know, relatively around 100 square feet because nobody wants to put it back too far off of the road. That being said, staff did propose, and the planning commission did recommend altering the size of onsite residential marketing signs from the 64 feet to 120 square feet. We also have proposed increasing the height, the maximum height of those signs, to 15 square feet, and we did build in the same setback requirement that I mentioned that the City of Aurora does. The setback would have to be equal to the maximum height of the sign. And additionally, we also incorporated a little language in regards to the site triangle. We currently have the existing site triangle that prohibits signs in that area so that cars can see. In regards to the off-site signage, our survey yielded that no community that we had found, at least, went above 100 square feet. So staff and the planning commission are recommending going to that 100 mark rather than exceeding it. Additional regulations that are currently in place with off-site signage are, they have to be more than 300 feet away from residential, and there cannot be more than one of these signs per quarter mile.
So this doesn't affect, like, the commons area at Saratoga or Orchard Prairie North? They can have numerous signs in that area? Because it's considered on-premise, or...
Correct. If the, if they own the lots, or, you know, the common areas...
Or have an agreement or whatever.
Yep, or have an agreement, easement, et cetera, then they are able to put up pretty much as many signs as they want up to this size. Now, they have proposed placing, for instance, in Saratoga, placing, I believe, three signs along Orchard, and then in Orchard Prairie North, they've planned on about five or six signs, most of them being smaller, two of them being this large 120 square feet in area.
What was the size of the signs when business was booming and the residential subdivisions were building? What was the size of the signs at that time? Was it still 64 square feet?
It was. However, in some cases, the village actually allowed, through an annexation agreement or through several annexation agreements, larger signs. So the requirement did exist. However, once again, larger signs are out there. There are currently several larger signs in the village.
Right. What, do you by chance know what, through some of the annexation agreements, what the size restrictions were?
That is a very good question. I am not certain of the exact size. However, I do know that Ryland currently has a sign that is 120 square feet on Route 30 for the Blackberry Crossing West subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And just my final comments are just that we built in the site triangle and the setback requirement into the off-site. With that, I would ask if there are any questions at the board.
Questions from the trustees?
The planning commission has voted on these recommendations?
Thank you, they have, and they voted six yeses and one abstention, and the abstention was just because of a new plant commissioner was waiting to really get into it until the next meeting, so...
Other questions? Next part of...
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the special use for outdoor storage for JPC Tree Care. Could you please administer the...
When it reset, it went away.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you could open that up, but no worries. We'll, okay, we will proceed. Thank you, though. The lot that this is being proposed on is in the M2 zoning district. Now, any outdoor storage in the M2 zoning district does require special use, as it does in M1 in business, so it's pretty similar across the board. Now, this item was brought before the planning commission in April, and it was tabled, and they had asked for some more information. Now, at the April meeting, we had the citizens' participation, the public hearing portion of the meeting, and some of the items that came up were stormwater concerns, Emerald Ash Bore concerns, general concerns with outdoor storage, as you heard earlier this evening, concerns with the smell of mulch. And to, just to address some of those items, staff did go out on the property during a pretty heavy rainstorm, and, you know, we witnessed that the portion of the site that JPC Tree Care is proposing to occupy flowed away from the residents. Now, that is not to say that the entire site flows away from the residents. There may be other areas. However, the area that JPC Tree Care plans on occupying did flow away from the site. I did take Engineer Wallers out with us, and we did come to the conclusion that there was paving on-site, and that without, without the need, because all outdoor storage has to be on a paved surface, and without the need for additional pavement, then there would not be a need for additional stormwater, detention, et cetera. The Emerald Ash Bore, as we've heard quite a bit about that even tonight, JPC Tree Care is on the list of approved contractors that the state puts out. I spoke with someone at the state, and they were glad to hear that, that the Tree Care facility was grinding the ash trees rather quickly. He said that that was almost as ideal as you could get. And then, as we've heard, the general concerns with outdoor storage, such as the smell, because of that concern, the planning commission did, is recommending to you approval, but approval with the condition that all of the outdoor storage kept, be kept to the southwest portion of the site. So in, in an attempt to mitigate some of the sight and smell items, that was the planning commission's remedy for that. In addition, I've been working with the property owners to put some screening in. The ordinance requires an eight-foot-tall fence, so we've been working to get an eight-foot-tall fence, and they've received some quotes for that size of fence across the frontage and of both sides of the building, and then across the north, which would screen it from residents to the north and to the east. With that, I guess I would ask if there are any questions.
Trustees?
Oh, I apologize. The planning commission did vote to approve this, five yeses, one no, one abstention.
Questions from trustees?
Could you enumerate how the vote broke out? Who were the five yeses? Who was the one no?
I can answer that, if you don't know. I mean, I was at the meeting.
I do know, sure.
Go ahead.
The five yeses were Commissioner Gustavo, Commissioner Hammond, Commissioner Francis. Okay, the no was McNeil-James, and the abstention was Bettzinger. Oh, Ukitis was a yes, as well as Kelsey. There we go.
I think much of it was alleviated tonight when he said he was not going to have any mulch. I think that's what, I was at the planning commission also, and they questioned the mulch, the height. I think he's got it higher than 10 feet, or did have at one time, and they questioned the height of that, and they questioned the smell from down on Sard Avenue. But some of that mulch in Sard Avenue has been there three to five years, and that smell is, and it's a, it's mountains, not just 10 feet high, so that smell is really bad down there. But if he alleviates the problem with the mulch here, I think that probably alleviates a lot of the questions the planning commission had.
And forgive my ignorance, what's the difference between mulch and wood chips? Is there a distinctive difference between those two?
Yes, sir. Wood chips would be like, we were on a new brush pickup, and we chip everything, and we dump it, and it's on a pile, and then it gets tall down. And they actually make mulch, they compost it. So a lot of that over there, too, they're still adding water. They're trying to get it to heat up. Once the bacteria in there eat the mulch, it'll start to age it, and then it makes it so that later, I don't use it on your plants, it doesn't burn all your plants off because a lot of the high carbon content's already been a little bit brought down.
So the chipped wood doesn't have the odor that the mulch...
It doesn't, as long as you keep it dry. You keep it dry. If it starts to get wet, it'll start to, start that composting process, and that's where you get the odors.
But they're going to move it every week, so that issue's moot? Okay.
And I was out there earlier today, actually measuring. There will be an exhibit attached to, attached to any ordinance that comes before you with this area that the planning commission recommended delineated, and JPC Tree Care has moved all of their material into that area as of this morning, so...
I think that was one of the questions, two meetings ago, of the planning commission, too, is if the surface was solid or not from the old days of the concrete, and they've been there so long that it proved that it was, so that alleviated that question from two meetings ago. Any other questions? Little more questions, both of them will not be on the consent agenda for Monday.
They'll be separate?
Separate.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Department updates? Jeff?
Sure. I'll start. Our new water billing clerk started last Monday, the 13th. Chris Wagner is her name, so if you come in, you'll see her working with Pat. Pat's last day is the 31st, so the end of next week. And just a reminder, Pat's retirement party is that evening at Gary O's, next Friday, the 31st. The auditors are coming in June 3rd. They'll be starting their audit, and they'll be here for a week and a half, two weeks or so for that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have of me. Not Director Povens?
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, the village, the staff is working on purchasing a bucket truck. We located one, and have put a down payment on it. It is from a company down in Texas. They do deliver, or we can send an employee down there to get it. So we're finalizing that agreement, and we hope to have that on-site here within a few weeks. We have also hired our seasonal employees. You may, oh, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
What kind of warranty you're getting on that truck?
I believe it is 90 days.
That's all?
That's all you get. It's a used vehicle, so 2008, I believe.
But it's all been reconditioned?
Mm-hmm. And the company actually owned this truck prior to selling it to the last owner, and now they purchased it back from them, so they have all the maintenance records and all that type of stuff. So I think we're about as tight as we can get on that for a used vehicle, but Public Works has hired seasonal employees. We have three seasonal employees in this year's budget. They started this week, so you'll see them out mainly mowing grass, but they may be doing some other work in the right-of-way. So if you have any questions on them, feel free to give me a call. We're also working, we have a chipper approved in this year's budget, a new brush chipper. Ed and I have been working with Vermeer on getting quotes lined up for that. We hope to bring that to you at next Tuesday's meeting. You'll also, at next Tuesday's meeting, be asked to review and hopefully approve our sidewalk replacement contract and our pavement patching contract. Those will both be on, so that's for sidewalk replacement. Usually, we try to alleviate tripping hazards first, but that's at various locations throughout town, and then pavement patching is primarily water main break repairs, so those will be in front of you next week. And there'll also be a resolution for expenditure of MFT funding as we continue to move forward on our 2013 road repair program. So you'll basically be giving approval to, I doubt that you approved the expenditure of our MFT funds to do those road repairs, and we'll have a detailed list of what streets those are at the board meeting. Thank you.
That concludes our updates.
Village President and Jamie are at, in Vegas at the ISCS show, and we hope they come back with some restaurants. I know they're looking at that for, out by Sam's Club. Newer unfinished business?
Staff has one item we'd like to discuss with you this evening. We did open bids last Tuesday for the Boulder Hill project. They came in very favorable, under what we had, had budgeted. That allowed us then to focus on the financing once we knew the amount. We did send to people this morning a memo and some options for the funding. I don't know if everybody got it or not. Hopefully, you did and had a chance to look at it. What staff is recommending is that we use conventional funding, be a 25-year bond for Part A, which is the construction this year. That'd be a 25-year bond, approximately $4.5 million. And then we would start working on the IEP A low-interest loan program for the remaining parts for next year's construction. That would allow us to construct this year by using the conventional funding, but then we could take advantage of the interest savings of the low-interest loan program for the second part of the project. Allows us to get in, I believe, everything. Mike and Pete were hoping to get into the program and keep the cost at that level that we talked about with the board previously, that $15 a month level. So what we're hoping tonight is to just make sure that there wasn't anybody that had an issue with us going forward with that, because next Tuesday, our plan is to bring to you then the sale of the bonds. The bond sale would take place next Tuesday morning, and we'd have the results for you that night, and then also to award the contract for Part A of the construction. So, but before we did that, we wanted to make sure there weren't any issues with that because we would want approval when we get there for both of those items, because we don't want to approve the construction if we don't have the funding.
Any objections? Do you not recommend Option 4?
Yes, I believe Option 4 is the one we're looking at.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other newer unfinished business? I want to thank Stan for... Any other newer unfinished business? I want to thank Stan for putting all the flowers on the bridge. I already had people mention that. And they always say, well, they're little. And I go, I know, but remember, by the end of the year, they're big. So I'm sure they'll look as good as they have for the last 10 years. It's been nice. Any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
You'll move?
Second. Take the roll.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Uh, Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee.